Good evening, Curry County. I'm Michelle Correio. It's great to be back for the second virtual town hall. So I've had the privilege of growing up in this beautiful place, and I work for Wilderverse and Humble Aerie Foundation as the Director of Community Solutions, Strategy, and Programs. And as the leaders that came before me have known since the beginning of time, our communities don't always recognize state lines, and this place is connected by our rivers and oceans and by our people. I want to take a moment to recognize the place that I'm joining from today is known as Houndquit by the local tribe of Talawa-Danee Nation. And that as all of you join from your homes this evening, we are each in a place that is the current and ancestral homelands of our local tribes. Over the last year and a half, our staff have had a unique position of supporting organizations across Curry, Delmore, Humboldt, and Trinity County as we have all responded to this pandemic. And we are really honored to have the opportunity to work with this group of leaders that have come together to organize this town hall tonight. So for this evening, we have an agenda that I'm going to walk you through, but we also would love to hear from you tonight. So as you're joining in, we're going to have some polls that pop up. And if you'd like to respond to them, it helps us inform and find out just where you're at as a community. So if you feel free to take the poll, and as that's going, I'll give you a couple minutes to respond to those, and I'll dive into the agenda. So for tonight, we will have an acknowledgement from Commissioner Court Voice. And then we have some of our lovely colleagues, Dr. Tom Jean, Dolly England, and Dana Drum from Oregon Health Authority with some updates and Halloween guidance. And we have some presentations from Olivia Davis with Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, and Pam Weinberger, our Curry Homeless Coalition with Beth Barker-Hidalgo, and St. Tim's Episcopal Church with Father Bernie Lindley. And then we're going to have an open moderated conversation. Dolly England will be taking live questions, and we'll be moderating through this with our CBOs and our health, Oregon Health Authority representatives, and then we'll close for the evening. So as a reminder, if folks can be sure to that we want to really bring in these questions as live and be responsive as we can, but we've been collecting these ahead of time, and that we really ask for kindness and respect in this space. We're going to do our best to answer as many questions as we can. And the ones that we don't get to, Oregon Health Authority has been wonderful in pulling together information from the previous town hall, and that'll continue and inform communications and information that our organization send out to keep us all informed. So as a reminder, our purpose of our Curry Town Hall is about consistent, clear, factual, and inspirational information about COVID-19 and our community. And with that, I'd like to introduce one of our county commissioners, Commissioner Court Voice, who's going to open up with some acknowledgements for this evening. Commissioner, are you muted?
Welcome everyone to the COVID pandemic public awareness update. Curry, second town hall. Hi, my name is Court Voice, County Commissioner, with Program Strategies and a heavy emphasis on Community Solutions Director Corello, the Wilderverse Community Foundation staff. September 22nd, pulled off in just nine business days, our first Curry Zoom COVID Town Hall. It was well attended and very informative. We wish to extend full gratitude to our frontline first responders and medical workers. My mom was practicing RN for 60 years. They are all our heroes. For just a moment, think though what it's sometimes like for them, what they often experience, the trauma they see. So sadly, I'd like to report to date in Curry County, our total deaths stand at 25. In Oregon, 4,300 lost. In America, over 735,000. And internationally, almost 7 million have passed. Can I ask for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. So here we are today. We have terrific panelists for you this evening. You can all benefit from their perspective on the new and ever-changing pandemic information, focus, and of course, recovery. This coming January will be two years since we first received the terrible news of the worldwide pandemic. I continue to work to make certain that I learn all that I possibly can and help our citizens understand what we're up against. I've been very encouraged by the level of coming together that I've seen in our county. I'm about to begin my sixth year as Commissioner, but these last two have certainly been way more intense than even my first two with the 2017 and 18 Chico Bar and Klondike fires. Those destroyed 1,000 acres and 10 structures, tragically, most of which were someone's home. Yes, 2019 provided a little bit of a breather. And then, of course, the last two years have been filled with nonstop weekly COVID research, responses, adjustments, policies, meetings, and lots of work. Here's what I believe, in ways I think we can all help. We do not need to fear this pandemic. Our citizens do need, do not need to feel intimidated. However, in somewhat of an analogy, all the years I ran the wilderness, I knew, but didn't properly prepare in advance. If I failed to respect the river, there could be most unwelcome and negative consequences. I submit to all that we must encourage everyone to be reminded, and I mean everyone, what the consequences can be if we don't prepare, respect the virus, focus with wise precautions, and work on our very best health efforts. We all have a role, a serious personal responsibility. Yes, it's true, less than 1% of the people that contract this disease don't make it. However, we want even that percentage to go down dramatically, and that's why we're here tonight. Thank you for caring, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much for those words, Commissioner Voice. And with that, we're going to transition this over to our Oregon Health Authority partners, who have put together a very informative presentation about current status of what's going on.
Well, thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Commissioner Voice. My name is Tom Jean. I'm Deputy State Health Officer at the Public Health Division at Oregon Health Authority. And we're going to start our presentation with really just a brief overview of some of the numbers and how Curry County is doing in the pandemic, and a little bit about vaccination and testing and some information. So I'm going to start with that. So here we have some numbers. Hopefully, you can all see this on the screen. This is the case data as of right now, as of yesterday in Curry County. So since the start of the pandemic, there have been 1,813 total cases of COVID-19 in Curry County. 250 of those have been among children. 71 have been hospitalized. And sadly, 25 people have died with COVID-19 in Curry County. Next slide, please. So this is a graph showing the cases over time, going all the way back to spring of 2020 in Curry County. And just briefly, the color coding here is blue for cases that were identified, tested positive. Most of them tested positive. We also have a presumptive case definition, but pretty much everybody, almost everybody is testing positive on COVID test. So those who are not hospitalized are the blue, and then the little bits of orange you see there are the hospitalized. So you can see it's a pretty small proportion that are hospitalized. But again, 71 total in the county, so it's not insignificant. And then with the gray there, you can see there's quite a few that we just haven't been able to determine whether they were hospitalized or not, that we just weren't able to reach them, for example. What I want to point out here is just how large the peak is that we are just coming out of. So you can see on the right side there that in August and September, Curry County, just like the whole state of Oregon, had a really large spike in cases. And that's in large part due to the Delta variant, which is highly transmissible compared to the previous variants. And also just the fact that we haven't really gotten, we haven't gotten everybody vaccinated. And you know, there's just a lot of transmission potential still out there because of that. So happily, those numbers are coming down. But I also want to point out that where we are right now statewide, and this applies to Curry County as well, is we're still at a very high level of transmission. We're seeing a lot of cases. We still have a lot of patients in the hospital with COVID-19. And we're roughly at the level where we are at the peak, where we were at the peak last winter. So that peak that was very large in November, December of last year, was, it really pales in comparison to what we just went through. So even though things are looking better, we have a long way to go before we're out of the woods here. Next slide. So of all the COVID-19 hospitalizations to date in Curry County, less than 3% of those were fully vaccinated. So that means over 97% of the people in the hospital were not vaccinated. We know that vaccination greatly reduces the risk of severe illness from COVID-19. There is absolutely no question of that. Vaccines are really effective and they're really safe. All of those who were hospitalized, that small percentage, and were fully vaccinated and hospitalized, they all survived. So I think those are really compelling numbers that we should keep in mind. Next slide. So this is a graph showing over time the vaccination rates in Curry County. We have these for all counties in Oregon on our website. And you can see that Curry County is at 62% now, almost 63% of adults who've received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. And then the blue portion there is about 7.5%. Those are the people who just have one, or they haven't completed their series. And then 55% have actually completed the series with either two doses of the Moderna Pfizer vaccine or one dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Booster doses are not a factor here at this point. Boosters are recommended, and we can talk about that for many people, but you're considered fully vaccinated if you've gotten the primary series. Where Curry County stands compared to the rest of the state is kind of in the middle of the pack. We have several counties in Oregon that are above 80%, and then we have some that are down to 40% still. Next slide. So I just wanted to highlight that there are several ongoing testing events in Curry County, in Gold Beach, in Brookings, and Port Orford, and no appointment is required. You can see the days and times here. And then at Curry Health Network, there is also testing, but an appointment is required. And if you'd like more information, you can click or look at these links. The bottom link is to the OHA website on testing, which has a lot more resources. Next slide. In terms of vaccinations, if you haven't gotten your vaccine yet, the first place to go would be your primary care doctor and talk to them. They can help answer questions. And then our website, GetVaccinedOregon, has a lot of information. We have a list there of where you can get vaccines all throughout the state. CDC also has a vaccine finder. And then 211 also has information on vaccines. And then some of those links below there are just more general information as well. Next slide. And finally, since it's that time of year, I love this time of year, Halloween, just some general safety tips. These shouldn't come as any surprise, but just a reminder here, everybody should be getting a vaccine. We recommend that for everybody 12 and over, and soon it'll be extended to ages 5 to 11, we're expecting. Remember that wearing a mask as part of a costume does not count as a COVID-safe mask. So make sure you can wear a cloth or medical mask underneath your costume. Stay in small groups. The smaller the group, the lower the risk. Keep your distance and do celebrations outdoors as much as possible. And with that, I will turn it over to Dolly England for the rest of our presentation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jean. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dolly England, and I am the Community Engagement Program Manager at the Oregon Health Authority. I have the honor and privilege of talking to you about our community-based organizations that are working across the state to support individuals that are being impacted by COVID-19. I think I have some slides if we want to share those. Thank you. Next slide. This is a picture of our team. We are representing all across the state. Next slide. Here is a map of how we are broken down, and your Community Engagement Coordinator for Curry County is Sue Parrish. Next slide. So what exactly do we do? We work with over 170 community-based organizations or CBOs all across the state of Oregon. In addition, we work with local public health or LPHAs, as well as OHA and Oregon Department of Human Services staff, as well as many other local partners. Next slide. We provide ongoing support through conversations and technical assistance. We support relationship building and workflows between our CBOs and our local public health authority. And we elevate, reflect, and share back community feedback. Next slide. We have three funding areas for our community-based organizations. There is outreach and engagement, contact tracing, and wraparound support services for individuals that are needing isolation or quarantine. Next slide. So a nice visual for all of this. We are helping to network build for the purpose of serving community. And we work really closely and depend on our community-based organizations to tell us what's happening on the ground. Next slide. I'm keeping it short and sweet for you because you don't really want to hear from me. You want to hear from our CBOs. But I do want to make sure you have access to lots of information. So here is the Community Engagement webpage, where you can see a full list of the community-based organizations that are funded across the state. You can also see links for testing information, vaccine information, as well as booster information. But next slide, I'd really love to introduce our community-based organizations because they are on the ground in Curry County doing this work. So I am happy to introduce those CBOs now. I'm unsure what this slide will do next, so we will find out. Brookings Harbor Community Helpers. Can I pass the baton over to you, Olivia Davis, as well as Pamela Weinberger?
Hello. My name is Olivia Davis, and I am the Resource Coordinator for the Brookings Harbor Community Helpers Food Bank and Help Center here in Brookings. I have been doing the COVID-19 since the beginning of 2020 and have been doing it since then. I've learned a lot throughout this time. So what we do here is we do the community engagement. We do the wraparound services, and we do the outreach and education. So with the wraparound, when a call comes in from the state through OHA or through St. Tim's, or just a client themselves, we get their information, and we're able to supply services for them. So what we can do is we can help get their groceries for them. We can help pay their rent. We can help pay their utility or their phone or car insurance, something that where they don't have to leave their home, because we want them to stay home to get well, so they're not out and about in the community and getting everybody else sick. We also do the community outreach and education. So what we do on that is we go into individual places here in Brookings, and we hand out what we call a COVID bag. Inside that bag has literature on the services that we can provide here at the Brookings Harbor Community Helpers. And then there has supplies for PPE, like your masks, your gloves. We also supply hand sanitizer, literature if they have any kind of questions. But the main part we're doing now is now we're starting to work on the vaccinations part of it. We have partnered up with St. Timothy's with Father Bernie, so we can work together and be able to supply our community with the vaccinations for our local residents in Brookings Harbor. And a personal side note on that. I got the Johnson &amp; Johnson back in April. But by August 5th, I had contracted the COVID-19. I was very, very sick. I didn't know if I was going to make it. I should have been hospitalized, but I had told my husband, no, I want to stay home. Just let me finish what I need to do here. Everybody at St. Tim's, everybody here at the office was concerned because I wasn't doing so well. I've had other complications in the past. I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and I'm a diabetic, so those were against me. So that's one reason why I got the shot. And two, I believe that shot is what kept me here today. It was having that shot. So we're just out here just to help the community members. We're not here to force you to have a shot, but take it from someone who's personal, who's been through that. You know, we want to be able to help you through that. We've had some pretty good cases that come through that made a big impact. We've had a lot of stories from families saying that if it wasn't for us being here for them, then they don't know where they'd be. You know, the groceries, the medication, you know, paying their bill because they were so stressed out. You know, that's what we're here for. As you're going to learn from the other two CBOs, we're here to help our community out. Pam, do you have anything you would like to say too? As so Pam is the Director here at the Food Bank, but she's also helped me on this program also. Someone let Pam talk a little bit, because she sees other stuff too that I may not see.
Well, I'll just talk a little bit about the whole reason why as a CBO, we were involved in contracting with OHA to do a wraparound COVID services. And I'll just tell a quick story. When we first heard about this, I contacted Dolly and asked her, is this something that our community needs to be engaged in? And we haven't, at that time, I believe we had three cases. And she said, yes, absolutely. The CBOs, your area, your role, we need you. And I have to say that I'm very thankful that we did because this last year, when you saw the graphs earlier about the increase in COVID cases for all of 2020, our cases in two and a half months jumped 185%. And so that was a lot of work for us as individuals, helping families. There were so many families that were affected at this time. And so we did our very best. But when you live in a small rural area, it gets real personal real fast because you know some of the people that are affected by COVID. And so even a lot of the people that volunteer and work here as staff contracted COVID. And so, you know, this is something that we do as a community helpers anyways, is helping people, but having this opportunity to extend services to our local community that always doesn't see the help that we have seen from OHA. It is a great partnership to have with individuals that come alongside you and walk with you. And it's not been an easy road, being a CBO, because like I said, you live in a small community. But I'm very thankful to have Olivia as a Research Coordinator, Dolly and Sue as people we can reach out to at Oregon Health Authority, our other CBOs in our area, Beth Barker-Hidalgo, Father Bernie, to be able to coordinate with them and to make sure that our community is safe, make sure our community is cared for, and that we are helping the people that need to have the help. So we're very, very thankful that we've had this opportunity.
I do have one thing I would like to end with is we are planning a youth event on December 5th. If anybody out there in our listening world wants to participate or to help us, please call us here at the Food Bank. Our phone number is 541-469-6988. If you or anybody you know of is affected by COVID, you can contact any one of our three CBOs. But my information is 541-661-6332. Or you can email me at olivia d@brookingsharborfoodbank.org. You can even text me. I love texting, so you can text me. It's the easiest to get ahold of me by is texting. And if you have any other questions out there, please call them in. We are here to help. Thank you, Ms. Dolly.
Y'all are so inspirational. I want to tell you that I talked to Olivia when she was ill and was like, I know you are committed to community because you are still showing up to work. So thank you for your commitment to community and for all of the hard work that you've done during the COVID response. We could not have done this work without you. And I do want to just give a quick shout out for anybody that doesn't have access to the internet or a computer, and you didn't catch that information. You can always call 211, and 211 info will give you that local information, not only for OHA, but for what's happening here in Curry County, what resources related to COVID are available here. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce your next CBO partner, your next community-based organization. I believe we have Beth with, I'm sorry, Curry Homeless Coalition. Beth Barker-Hidalgo, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Dolly. Yeah, so I'm the Executive Director of the Curry County Homeless Coalition, and we immediately saw where we might be able to provide support for our community back in March of 2020, when the pandemic was declared. And so we do serve our unsheltered population, and so we wanted to lean forward and provide some instructions, some guidance for our unsheltered community members on. So we put together about 300 COVID hygiene kits for our homeless population, and that included directions, business card directions, to call the triage line to engage with our Curry Health Network and get tested if they aren't feeling well. So that was kind of how we started stepping into this community-based organization. Where we evolved into that process was once we learned of opportunities with Oregon Health Authority to kind of be more formal and actually have financial support and human capital support to be able to respond to households impacted by COVID, as well as our unsheltered community members. So we've supported many households with assistance with rent and mortgage payments, utility, insurance, cell bills. As Olivia mentioned, grocery shopping and delivery of groceries, over-the-counter meds. We've done, included education outreach materials with those deliveries, as well as the information that we have put out into our unsheltered population. So I think I've got somebody managing slides. I can't see them. There we are. Okay, so there was my first slide. Thank you. So this is a list of what I just mentioned of the support that we've provided and that we can provide moving forward for households impacted by COVID. Next slide, please. So we have data that we've collected. We've, our organization have assisted with just a bit over 120 households in the county. We have supported over a dozen vaccine clinics. We do have a crew coming over each week. As Dr. Jean mentioned, here in Gold Beach, they come up from Crescent City in Delmore County, and they come over from Lane County. We're very appreciative of that crew coming and providing access to vaccine and testing for all our whole communities. You may ask, well, why, why do we need to do that when people can make an appointment with their primary care provider and get a vaccine or get a test? Many of our folks don't have established primary care providers. And it's not necessarily because they don't want one. Our population, there's a greater demand than there are providers in Curry. So it's sometimes difficult to establish with a provider. So we wanted to make sure that we remove that barrier for our community members that may not have a primary care provider. So So, um, we, we started vaccinating and testing, I think as far back as April 2020. And then, um, now it's been regularly since August, we posted the weekly vaccine testing events. So, um, next. So, yeah, I talked about the COVID kits, instructions to call Curry Health Network triage line. We did confirm during the last, um, town hall where Curry Health Network was a panelist. That is still the best way to get ahold of, um, Curry Health Network for, if you think that you have, you know, if you have symptoms and you think you might have COVID and you want to get tested is to call that, um, triage line. And it's on the Curry Health Network website. So, next slide. If you, if you or your household have been impacted by COVID and you're, um, needing some support, you can reach us by a number of ways. You can email us at curryhomelesscoalition@gmail.com. Our phone number is 541-425-0426. And then we have our website, which is curryhomelesscoalition.org. There is a COVID request form on that website. And so you're able to access, if you Google Curry Homeless Coalition, it will pop up. We also have, uh, a new staff member who's in training as a community health worker. She is bilingual Spanish and English. So if you need Spanish interpretation, we can, we can provide that upon request. Then, and I guess what I'd like to tell the community is that it's been an amazing experience, um, working with our community partners, Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, St. Timothy's Episcopal Church, even Brookings Core Response have had, um, have played a, a role in responding to the needs through St. Tim's and then also as, um, support for our folks that are unsheltered and needing isolation and quarantine. We have, there's food delivery to those folks in motels. I mean, we just don't want them out in the community. So we're really literally providing their day-to-day needs, um, while they're isolating. So there's quite a bit that goes into serving the community and we're, we're very happy to be able to do this. Again, my name is Beth with the Curry Homeless Coalition. Our number is 541-425-0426. Or email us at curryhomelesscoalition@gmail.com if you're needing help, um, to recover. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Beth, and for your commitment to community and making sure everyone has what they need. We really appreciate you. So next, I get to introduce Father Bernie with St. Timothy's, who I personally picked up the phone and said, we need some extra help in Curry County. I hear you're doing this work already. Can you please help? Make sure folks have what they need to isolate in quarantine safely. And he said, not a problem. We are happy to step up. So thank you for that, Father Bernie. And I will hand it over to you next.
Hey, uh, it looks like my, thank you, Dolly. Looks like my audio's on. Oh, here we go. I got a prompt to start my video. Here we go. Hi. Hi, everybody. So, uh, yeah, thank you for inviting us, uh, into the, uh, partnership with, more fully into partnership with the Oregon Health Authority, Dolly. I, uh, I remember when I got that phone call from you and it took me a while to process, uh, exactly what all that entailed, but, um, the support that we've received from the Oregon Health Authority through Dolly and, uh, Sue Parrish, whom you mentioned earlier, has been really overwhelming. We're very grateful for all that. One of the things I want to mention quickly as we get started is that, um, up in Port Orford, there's an organization called Coast Community Health. And, uh, they're, they're in Bandon, uh, and Port Orford both. And that organization has provided over 5,000 shots since, uh, the vaccines became available. And we're, my hope is to be able to partner with Coast Community Health more fully in the future and perhaps entice them to come to Brookings so that we can have, uh, they're a federally qualified, um, health clinic. And certainly I, I look forward to extending our, our partnership, not only with the Oregon Health Authority, but also with, uh, Coast Community Health. So anyway, I have a friend there. She's the director of that organization named, uh, Linda Maxon, and she's one of the people who's, uh, making a huge difference in Curry County. So thank you to her group. The, uh, when we started testing people in July, that's who got us started was Coast Community Health. They supplied us with our initial, uh, tests that we got, the Abbott Rapid Test, Binax Now Tests. And they provided the training that we needed in order to know how to successfully do those tests. And, uh, at the time, we got 250 tests in the beginning of July. And we thought to ourselves, my goodness, this is a lot of tests. They're going to expire at some point. And I wasn't sure if we would be able to use them all. And then at the end of the July, at the end of July, all of a sudden, we were doing 30, 40, 50 tests a day. Pretty soon, we were doing 120 tests a day, uh, between the hours of, uh, 12 and 3:00 in the church basement. And, uh, over the course of that time, we have identified 600, over 600, about 615 positive, uh, cases for, uh, Curry and Del Norte residents. And, uh, the, as far as we, I don't, I don't know all the people who've had adverse, uh, outcomes from their COVID, but we do know of four that tested in our, our testing clinic that are no longer alive right now, that died from COVID-19, that we provide a wraparound care to. So, uh, at least four, and all four of those were Brookings residents. So, uh, this thing, uh, it takes a personal toll on us developing relationships as we support those families and then have them, uh, end up, uh, going on ventilators and eventually, um, passing away from this disease. So, it, the whole thing, it's real. I guarantee you, it's real. I guarantee you, it takes a toll. And this isn't, uh, this isn't the flu. It's not pneumonia. Although people who get COVID can get pneumonia. But, uh, anyway, this, this is definitely impacting our community adversely. So we started, uh, vaccinating back in April. April 6th was the first day we vaccinated people. And, uh, we would average about, um, 32, 34 people a day for the first couple of weeks until, um, Johnson and Johnson went on pause and that kind of slowed down everything. But, uh, today, we vaccinated 32 people. So we're kind of back to our former numbers that we had before. There was, we went into a big long lull and the reason why the numbers are up now, of course, has to do with, uh, Friday's approval by the Oregon Health Authority of boosters. And so we're getting all kinds of different people, uh, boosters, whether it's Moderna or, um, or Pfizer. But the thing that's really important for us is getting people that got Johnson and Johnson back in, uh, April and May, and even before that, getting them their booster shots. Because, uh, you know, we found out that Johnson and Johnson wasn't quite as effective as, uh, the mRNA vaccines were. And so we're really happy to be able to have the option to, uh, get people, uh, boosted up with Moderna on top of their Johnson and Johnson. It's, it's, uh, you know, the numbers that, that I see, uh, in the, in the news is 76% increase, not, not, not percent, excuse me, a 76-fold increase in antibodies as a result of getting Moderna on top of Johnson and Johnson. So we were able to do a bunch of those today, uh, and, uh, we have a tremendously good staff that helps us, uh, provide those vaccinations. You know, today, we started vaccinating at 12 and we ended at 3:00. Uh, like I say, we vaccinated 32 people and we did that with a staff of three. We had our nurse, uh, that was administering the shots and drying up the needles, uh, the syringes. And then we had, uh, our support gal that, uh, that, uh, she's also a nurse that watches to make, you know, as people are going through their 15-minute waiting period. And then we had our data entry person, uh, Maria, who stepped up and did an outstanding job for us today. And then we tested 18 people on the other side of the building and we did have two people go positive. So this thing's not done yet. On Monday, we had five people, uh, test positive. And yesterday, fortunately, we didn't have any, which was good. We've only had three days so far since July, where we had, uh, no people test positive. And we test six days a week. So another interesting thing is there was, uh, that, uh, Wednesdays, there's a vaccination event that happens every Wednesday up in Gold Beach. And we supply the vaccine, uh, for that, for the traveling nurses that go up there. And they provided 13, uh, vaccines today. So Saint, through Saint Timothy's efforts today, we did, uh, 45, uh, with our partners, the traveling nurse partners that are in contract with Oregon Health Authority. That organization is called Jogan Health. So anyhow, uh, in addition to all that, you know, and all the stuff that we're doing with testing and vaccinations, and that's all walk-in stuff. Um, we vaccinate on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Although when we get the pediatric Pfizer, we expect to add some additional days. And, uh, so as soon as that gets approved, we're going to roll out some additional days for that. And, uh, and, uh, it's kind of fun. There, there's this thing that I saw on Shark Tank. It's this, it's this ladybug thing with a freezer pack and it vibrates and you put it on the arm of the, of the, of the, like a kid. It's kind of made for kids, but I tested it out on adults today. You put it on the arm and it vibrates and it gets cold and it kind of like overstimulates, uh, the, uh, the, um, nerve endings. And so the hope is, is that when you put the shot in, it's, uh, the, uh, the person doesn't feel it. And, uh, of the, um, six people that I tried that on today, maybe it was eight people I tried it on today. Half of them said, man, it was a night and day difference. And the other half said, oh, I don't know. I couldn't tell if it made a difference or not because there are people who aren't, uh, really, so anyway, we're looking when we do the pediatric deal to pull out the old ladybug thing. So I'm excited about that. And, uh, and try to get those five to 11-year-olds vaccinated with a minimum of discomfort. So, uh, anyway, uh, what happened though in, I don't even know what month it was that Dolly called me. It must have been August. She said, we'd like to, we'd like to support you and actually have you add to the services you currently provided, the wraparound care that Beth and Olivia and Pam talked about. So that during the surge, when the people test positive in your clinic, in your test clinic, that you can immediately offer them the support that they need in order to be able to, uh, you know, so it doesn't have to go through, um, later up follow-up phone calls through the contact tracing folks. So that you can, you can identify the people who need the help, do it right now, get their phone numbers, call them up and, uh, get them groceries, uh, as early as that same day or maybe the next day. And so we ramped up and put a whole bunch of people, um, on our, uh, on our wraparound staff. And, and the number is probably like 14 or 15 people that we were able to get together. And, um, right now, things have been slower certainly, and we're grateful for that. But we anticipate that, uh, come Thanksgiving, that there's going to be an increase. And when that increase comes, we're going to be ready for it. We're going to be ready to support our community. Because don't forget, do you know this? At the ages between 12 and 17 in Curry County, it's only 37.3% of that population that has been vaccinated. So we're ripe to have this thing just burn up through our school system in Curry County. Two-thirds, almost two-thirds of the kids have not been vaccinated, uh, in that age group. And I don't anticipate that there's going to be a lot more in that, uh, in that five to 11. So until we can get more kids vaccinated, there is, uh, there's a really good potential for, um, for there to be outbreaks at the schools. And when a kid goes home and they have COVID, uh, their family ends up getting COVID. We, we see breakthrough cases where, because you can't isolate from children, especially small children. Maybe an older teenager you can, uh, but, uh, smaller kid, you're going to have them right up there. Uh, you're going to make close contact with them to the point where you're going to end up being exposed to a really high viral load that is going to penetrate the vaccination. And the, the hope is of course, is that it's going to be a mild case, but nonetheless, those people are going to be contagious. And we have to keep, we have to keep our community safe. And the best way to do that, obviously, is to vaccinate everyone. And we look forward to being a part of that. We're glad we've, so far, we've been involved in over 1,500 vaccinations. And, uh, we've provided over 4,000 tests. So we started out, didn't know how we were going to do 250, didn't know how we were going to use them all. And, uh, right now, we're over 4,000 that we've done. So, anyway, thank you for all that, Dolly. I'm sure you're ready to.
Oh, no. Thank you. Thank you, Father Bernie. Um, you shared so many great testimonies. I couldn't help but think, uh, that you were saving lives out there. You're sharing the information, all of you are. And so many great questions are coming in, and I want to make sure that we can move on to that question and answer portion of this town hall. So I'm gonna direct our first question, I think, over to Dr. Jean. We've got some vaccine questions for you. So what exactly happens after you test positive for COVID? And how do I know if I got the Delta variant?
Thanks, Dolly. Yeah, I'm happy to answer these questions. So, well, when you test positive, you know, the results of that test are, are generally going to be reported directly to, well, the public health. Uh, and then it comes to OHA, uh, and for Curry County, OHA is, uh, acting as local public health. But, uh, you should also, um, you know, your healthcare provider and whoever administered the test, um, should be contacting you with your results. Um, and so it's kind of this two-pronged approach here. So you're going to, you're going to hear from them. Um, and then, uh, in Curry County, OHA staff, if you test positive, will be reaching out to you, um, to, to give you information how, how you should be, uh, isolating to, to prevent spreading the virus to your family, to your friends, how you can care for yourself, um, they can give you some resources, uh, to support you while you are self-isolating. And that's going to be a 10-day, um, period, um, after your symptoms started, um, during which you should be staying away from others, including people in your household, if at all possible. Stay in a separate room, use a separate bathroom if, if you have one. Don't share personal household items, wash your hands, et cetera. And for some reason, you, um, get a positive result, but nobody has contacted you. You, you can, uh, well, first of all, they, they will try eventually. It might take a little time. So the first thing I would say is make sure you answer any calls, even if you don't recognize the number, uh, in the, in the day or so after a positive test. And, and then we do have information about all this isolation and what you should do. We have some really good guidance documents that can help you before anybody might contact you. Um, and then the question of the Delta variant, um, so in general, COVID tests, um, are not testing for specific variants. They just test for the presence of the general coronavirus RNA, the genetic code, um, to identify whether you have that in your body or not. But we do collect, um, a small portion of all tests that are sent to, uh, the state lab and some of the university labs that have that advanced, uh, sequencing to look at different variants. Um, and I believe right now we're at about 6%, which is actually very good compared to a lot of states. So, um, we're, it's a very, uh, involved process to, to determine variants. So we try to get a, enough to really be representative of the whole state. And currently what we're seeing in Oregon throughout the entire state is that probably something like 99% of all, all the tests that we've sequenced are showing that Delta variant. Uh, so it's really taken over, um, here like it has everywhere else.
Thanks, Doc. We appreciate it. I'm going to give you just a quick break and we're going to take a Facebook Live question. And I'm not entirely sure who's going to be able to answer this, but the question is, where specifically is the vaccination clinic on Wednesdays in Gold Beach? Which one of our amazing panel members can answer that? Beth, I see you.
Hi, yeah, this is Beth. So the vaccination and testing clinics are held at the Curry County Fairgrounds. It's a drive-through. So you just pull up, stop, stay in your car and they come ask if you are there for a test or a vaccine. There is a registration process in advance, um, for the testing. And let me see, I apologize, I don't have something to drop in the chat, but I will get the information and get it put in the chat where you can go to register for testing, um, at the event. So 11 to 4, every Wednesday, Curry County Fairgrounds.
Sometimes called the Event Center.
Thank you to all of you. Okay, so I think that the next question is going to be a mix between Dr. Jean as well as a CBO. So Dr. Jean, you said, you mentioned isolation, but what about quarantine? What does that mean? And how long do I need to stay in it? And part two of this question for CBOs is, what support can I get if I'm in isolation and quarantine? So Doc, thank you for stepping up.
Yep. Great question. Um, there's still a lot of confusion, I think, um, because we have isolation and we have quarantine. And, you know, media and, and a lot of people kind of mix those up. They're really pretty similar. But, um, just to, to, to be clear about it, isolation is what you do if you have COVID. So if you test positive, um, or you have symptoms with, with a recent exposure and we assume that you have it, we want you isolating for 10 days because that's, that's how long it takes to be sure that you're, you're through the illness and not spreading it. Quarantine is for people who are not sick, who've had exposure. And quarantine, the safest quarantine is actually 14 days. And the reason- And the reason it's longer is that, uh, it's not only the time during which you could be infectious, but it's, it's the time it takes between that close contact where you might've gotten it and the time when you become yourself infectious or contagious to others. And that can be many days and that, that's why it's up to fourteen days. Now, it's pretty rare for it to take fourteen days. For most people, that's going to be closer to, uh, three to five or six days, something like that. So we do have a, a short option and that is a ten day quarantine. Um, so in Curry County, we would say that it's okay to quarantine for just 10 days. Although we still recommend that you watch for symptoms, uh, and minimize your contact for a full fourteen days after your exposure.
Thank you, Dr. Jean. So a CBO, I see you, Olivia, and, and cover your camera. So I suppose you're going to tell us about what support someone in isolation or quarantine might get.
Yeah. So what we can do for them, for either the quarantine or the isolation is going to be the same system. We would, um, prepare you guys with groceries. We'd contact you by, um, by phone and ask you to send us a list of what you would like, so we can have that dropped off at your doorstep. Would you bring a COVID kit, which we have, um, a little bit of everything in there to help your stay. And then we try to get the kids something to do. Then we can help pay your rent or we can help pay your utility that's going to maybe be turned off, or we can help pay for, um, a water bill or, um, prescription that you need to be picked up that you're, you're in, that you're copay, that you can't afford for your copay, that we can pick that prescriptions up for you and do them to your home. Or if you need over the counter medications, we can pick those up for you too. So they're both going to be the same.
Thank you so much for answering that question. Okay, so now I'm going to jump to what looks like some vaccine questions. If I've had COVID, should I get vaccinated?
Yes, Dolly, you should. No, any, so anybody who's had COVID, um, there, there is, uh, some level of natural immunity that you would get from the infection. Uh, and what I can say is there's so much variability in, in what that natural immunity could be. Um, and it's also not true that natural immunity or so-called natural immunity from the actual virus is better than the vaccine immunity. The vaccines are actually so effective that, uh, we think it's more, it's a better and more reliable immunity than infection. So if you had a really mild illness, um, but you tested positive, your, your immunity might not be nearly as strong as somebody who maybe had a more severe illness um, and, and not as, uh, good as somebody who is vaccinated. So we know the vaccines, um, are super effective and we know they're safe, including in people who've had COVID. So we absolutely encourage you to get, uh, vaccinated, um, get a full, full, um, vaccine series. After COVID, you'd want to wait, you know, until you're through that ten day isolation period and you're actually feeling better before you got it. Um, and then if you did get monoclonal, um, antibody treatment in a, in a hospital or clinic, um, for your COVID, uh, you would want to wait till ninety days after that because those antibodies that you got as part of the treatment could actually interfere with your immune response to the vaccine. Um, but we absolutely recommend it. It's safe, it's effective, and it's going to give you really good immunity, um, including after COVID.
Thank you, Doc. So I'm going to go down to the live questions. I've got a question about how are local doctors learning about long COVID? I have experience here in Brookings, doctors who are not interested in long COVID symptoms, unless you can show a positive COVID test. I was sick before there were tests and so I have none. Do we have information on how local doctors are learning about long COVID?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, uh, in general, um, public health officials are, are really working to stay on top of, uh, latest research, um, in, including health guidance related to both short and long-term symptoms of COVID. Um, and we do try to pass that information on to healthcare providers around the state. Um, we have health alert, uh, advisories that we send out periodically. Um, we also occasionally do webinars and other online trainings to, to help providers. Um, ultimately, you know, providers, um, have a lot of, uh, resources and references out there are disposable. And they should be, uh, you know, they should be doing their, their part to educate themselves too on, on these things. But it is hard, you know, things change really fast, um, in terms of our knowledge about this, this virus and how to treat it. Um, and I guess I would say if you have long COVID, but you never had a positive viral test, you know, your provider should still be willing to listen to you and they could potentially give you an antibody test, um, which even if you've, you know, long since recovered, uh, you may still be positive on an antibody because your immune system has some, some memory of that virus. Um, so that would be one thing that could be considered. But, uh, again, I think, uh, just talking to your healthcare provider and, um, trying to, trying to get some good information through them, uh, is, is the best approach. Uh, and you know, if you're not getting the information you need, you could try to get a second opinion too.
It's always good to remember what our patient rights are. Thanks for that reminder. Okay, let's jump over to a booster question. Who is eligible for a booster? And do you need proof or documentation to get it? Can I mix them shots up? And are there any clinics? Or is OHA track who gets what vaccines?
Well, I can take a stab at those. There's a bunch of questions there, Dolly. Uh, so for, for boosters, first of all, I'm going to start with the, the J and J, the Johnson and Johnson, because that's pretty straightforward. If you got the Johnson and Johnson shot, um, everybody eighteen and over is, uh, recommended to get a booster once you're at least two months out from that first shot. And, uh, so that's, that's kind of the simple one. For people who've gotten the Pfizer or Moderna series, um, we, we have several groups who should definitely be getting a booster. And so that would be people who are age sixty-five or older, people living in a long-term care facility, um, and then people who are age fifty or older with, uh, underlying medical conditions. We have a whole list of those. That's everything from, from diabetes to cancer, um, pregnancy. There's a lot of, a lot of conditions there that, uh, that would count, um, because they put you at higher risk for, for severe illness. Then there's a second group of people who we, we kind of say may get the booster. It's not a, it's not a strong recommendation, but you certainly are welcome to, um, get the booster. And that would be people who are eighteen to sixty-four, uh, who have some of those underlying medical conditions or who work in a setting like a healthcare setting or grocery store, a school, um, other institutional settings, um, or, or occupational settings that put them at higher risk of exposure to the virus. Um, so those are the people that, um, all those people are, are eligible for a Pfizer or Moderna booster. Um, mixing and matching, um, just came down, I think last week, the official recommendation that mixing and matching is totally okay. Um, studies showed that, um, in some cases mixing and matching might actually give you slightly better immune response. Um, but it's really up to you, whatever you have access to. Uh, if you just want to get whichever one is at the, uh, vaccine event that's most convenient, that's great. Um, if you want to get the same one you got before because you felt good about it and didn't have a strong reaction, uh, you know, or symptoms like, um, you know, swelling in your arm and things like that, um, then go ahead and do that. But basically any, any of the three is, is approved, uh, as a booster. And then Dolly, I think there was another question. I, I forget what the other one was.
How do clinics track which vaccine you got? Does OHA track that?
Yeah, so I might not be the best person to answer that. Maybe others have information, but we, we do have a general sense for where we're sending, um, the state and federal allocations of vaccines. Um, but if you, if you are just trying to figure out, you know, a local pharmacy or a local site, what they have, you might just try contacting them, um, and, and see what they have on stock and what they're, what they're giving on that day.
Thank you for that. So I want to just give a pause and see if our ASL friends need to switch. Or if you are good. Nope, sweet. Just making space for you. Thank you. Okay. Next question, let's move to the youth. Got lots of youth questions up in here. Uh, when will vaccines for children five to 11 be available?
Another great question. Um, that is expected very soon. So, uh, yesterday the FDA advisory panel, um, recommended it for that age group, uh, five to 11. Um, I believe tomorrow the FDA is going to vote on it. Uh, and then in the next few days after that, the CDC will be kind of reviewing the evidence, making their recommendation. Um, and then we have, um, out here on the West Coast, we have the Western States, uh, uh, review committee that includes people from California, Oregon, Washington and Nevada. It's a, a lot of physicians and, and public health folks who review that recommendation, review the data and then make their recommendation. And then the governors of those states, um, uh, will, will kind of give the final seal of approval. So that's a lot of steps, but they're all carefully orchestrated at this point and we're expecting this to happen um, in the next week. So as soon as next Friday, we could have vaccines approved for five to 11. It may not be that soon, could be a few days after, but, um, right now I'm expecting all those things to kind of just go through with a approval, um, from each of those groups. Um, the data is pretty clear that the vaccines are very safe and very effective in, in five to 11, just like they are in the other age groups. So I think it's really exciting. Um, this is one of the last, uh, big groups that's not eligible, um, and that will change very soon.
Thank you. So let me ask this next question of CBO. What supports are available for a family who has a child that's been exposed and they need to keep that child home from school? And perhaps they also need to miss work to take care of the child. What kind of resources might be available? If one of our CBOs wants to answer.
I guess I can go, Dolly. I, and Beth is, uh, could probably answer as well, but the same support that we give for everyone. Um, if the child tests positive, then, uh, we're gonna, we're going to, uh, offer to pay the rent, um, at least partial rent. It depends on how long, uh, the family. Cause it runs, this COVID thing runs through families. If the kid, if a child has COVID, odds are the parents are going to end up with COVID. We had a case where, uh, two-year-old little boy had it, you know, I was talking about this before where the mom, she can't isolate off of her two-year-old son. So she ended up getting it, even though she'd been vaccinated because there they are face to face as she carries him. You know, because two-year-olds like to be picked up and held. But the husband was able, the father, you know, the husband was able to, um, be in a different room. But, uh, you know, so the child gets the COVID and, uh, four or five days later than the mom does. So you're looking at, uh, uh, they're going to have to be, quarantined or isolated or whatever. And I appreciate Dr. Jean making the distinction there, but, um, anyway, for, uh, i- it's going to be fifteen, twenty days perhaps. And so we're going to, um, try to come up with a strategy to, uh, provide them with rent, whether it's partial rent or a full month's rent and utilities so that they, uh, don't have to feel pressured to work. The, the phrase that I use is we want people to successfully quarantine. And, uh, it doesn't, uh, you know, our assumption is, is that when a child tests positive in the household, that the parent, at least one of the parents will. And, uh, that probably all the other children will, unless like I say, if it's a teenager and they, teenagers sometimes naturally isolate. So anyway, how do you like that, Dolly?
It was great. Thanks, Father Bernie, very much. So let's keep the kid questions going here. Will my child spread the virus to teachers, grandma, grandpa, me? Et cetera.
Yes. Yes, they will. That's the short answer.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say, uh, you know, hopefully they won't because they were, they're wearing a mask and in school and, and, uh, they're not exposed. Um, that's, that's why we have these, these mask requirements in schools. Um, but if, if a child does get infected, um, you know, uh, hopefully in the school setting, because masking is in place, they won't spread to teachers. Um, there's distancing and masking, those go a long way. We have enhanced ventilation and, and hygiene. Um, but unfortunately in the household setting, you know, it's, it's much harder. You're probably not wearing masks, um, uh, and, you know, in the house and you're spending a lot of time with family. So, um, if a child is infected, trying to keep them away from grandma, grandpa, um, and parents as much as possible during that period i- is the way to low, to lower the risk. Um, I know that may not always be possible, but that's really why we're trying to avoid it in the first place. Um, and, and to minimize contact, um, during that isolation period. That is the, the best thing we can do at that point to stop the spread.
Thank you for that. Uh, I'm going to ask another youth question. At what age are youth able to get vaccinated without permission from a parent?
That's a great question. Um, so according to Oregon law, uh, anybody who's age fifteen and older can give consent to medical treatment, including vaccinations, um, assuming it's, it's at a healthcare provider. So I believe that might not apply in a pharmacy. But, uh, anywhere else where you've got a, a doctor or a physician assistant, um, a nurse practitioner, uh, even a dentist or optometrist, um, under their license, they're providing medical care and they're allowed, uh, under Oregon law to give that to, uh, a minor as long as they're fifteen or older. Um, and then, uh, even for kids who are younger than that, uh, they do need, if you're, you know, for example, twelve to fourteen years of age, they would need parental guardian consent. It doesn't necessarily mean the parent or guardian has to be there in person with them when they get their vaccination. Uh, they could potentially have written consent obtained in advance. So you should check with the, the vaccination provider, um, as to whether a parent or guardian must be present for that age group.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like my next question is, if I have to go to the hospital while I have COVID, who pays that bill?
Well, that is not a good question. I think it depends a lot on, um, you know, what, what your health insurance is and, and where you go. Um, there's a lot of variables there and I'm not sure I can answer that, um, in, in any more detail. I will say that, uh, uh, vaccinations are free to all and, and that's the best way to stay out of the hospital in the first place. Hospitalization can be really costly.
Agreed. Um, and I know there are many, uh, programs that can assist if folks are uninsured or don't have enough insurance. Um, I'd like to just take a second, uh, to go back and just ask our CBOs. What impacts are you seeing because of COVID within your community?
I, Dolly, really a great question. Um, impacts that we're seeing, uh, here in Central and North Curry and, and also, you know, what I've heard from our partners in South County, um, are, um, households having like Bernie mentioned, when there's kiddos, they, it can be five, six, seven weeks um, of support and, and helping those families stay isolated and, and mitigate that community spread. Um, I first, you know, made four or five trips with groceries for just one household in, in a five to seven week period of time. Um, so it can really take a toll on a larger family. Um, and also we know that our seniors, I mean, our demographic here is, we're primarily, um, people in, in their fifties, sixties, seventies and older. And so, um, we've been real concerned about impacts on our, our senior citizens and, um, making sure that they're safe. And then also not too awfully isolated. There's a breaking point when isolation becomes a bit overwhelming for, for our community members. Um, we're fairly isolated just by geography. And so we really, um, are working to try to make inroads to our more isolated portions of our communities and ensure that people understand what resources are available. On the upside, um, there is a, a silver lining to all of this. Um, one of the uh, many positive impacts that we have experienced again is our ability to partner and work collaboratively and, and in coordination with St. Timothy's, with Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, and with Coast Community Health and, and our other, um, community-based organizations. They may not be contracted with OHA, but we certainly are making a lot of referrals to our community action agency, a lot of referrals to ODHS for self-sufficiency, aging in people with disabilities. Um, you know, and, and really engaging at a much higher level with our community partners that provide similar services. Um, OHP enrollment had, was huge in the very beginning of all this, ensuring that our folks, um, that were eligible for OHP were able to access enrollment and application assistance. So it's, it's really given us the opportunity to step into that space um, and, and help connect people with other partners in the community and other. and help connect people with other partners in the community and other resources they may be eligible for. And then I can't say enough about building the partnerships with St. Timothy's and Brookings Harbor Community Helpers and working. We're really building a model for how to continue to serve this, our communities in need in a really effective and impactful way.
Thank you. Olivia or Father Bernie, would you like to also share?
Well, Beth said most of everything already, but I totally agree. Without the collaboration with all of our CBO programs working together, we couldn't be where we're at today. It takes a village to raise a child. Well, it takes all of the CBOs and partners to take care of this pandemic of this COVID that was attacking every community in the United States and outside the United States. So without the collaboration, we don't have nothing. We need to collaborate to be able to help every niche of our area. And as Beth was saying, we are very rural. We have small communities way up in the hill. And then we have, the biggest community is, you know, South County down here in Brookings Harbor. But without Beth and everybody else up there, we'd be all over the whole county. So that collaboration comes in to be there, be an important part for all of us. And we all work so well together. Father Bernie, we, him and I, work a lot close together, because we do all South County. So we work out the vaccine events. We do, if they need anything for testing, if I need anything that needs help with, he's there. Beth is always there for us if we need sleeping bags or tents or something for our houseless community, where we were able to, you know, help them out during this time if they get sick or if they need vaccination, needs a couple of days of motel. So we have all that together, because everybody works together on that, whether it's one person getting it all set up, but everybody uses that same system. And Brookings Core, we can't forget Brookings Core response. Diana and Michelle have done so much with all of the CBOs to take care of our families. And they work with the houseless community here, and they're amazing. Father Bernie, you know, Beth, Sue. We have a staff here. We have an interpreter here for Spanish. We have four or five other people who help shopping. We have Pam, who helps a lot in the office, on the back, behind the scenes, that we need, it's a job for everybody, not just one person. That's why we are a community and a collaboration together.
Well said. And with that, I am going to hand it over to Michelle, who is going to close us out, I believe. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to moderate this evening.
Thanks, Dolly, and thank you to all of our community partners here. Such a rich conversation and so much information. Actually, I would like to hand it off to Court Voice for some closing statements. And then I will close up the night with a final poll. One more question we wanna ask all of you, and just with our utmost gratitude. So with that, Commissioner Voice?
Thank you. Thank you again. You know, one second here. Yeah, thank you all. Again, in my view, we don't have to fear the COVID pandemic, but I hope none of our citizens, whoever take it for granted, when and where will there be another surge? You heard Father Bernie remind us of Thanksgiving time. That's only a month away. The virus and various strains are going to be with us for a long time. You're hearing that, instead of the cold and flu season and the years ahead, the experts say we'll be experiencing, experiencing the cold, flu, and COVID season. However, we make a positive difference in a lot of people's lives. That will take our continued sense of community. And again, everyone has a role. I'm not a doctor and far from being an expert. I have, though, had the privilege of consulting with medical people and other career professionals. All have a keen eye on the present and the future. Better health, good rest, healthy diets, dedicated exercise, helpful vitamins, and yes, please consider the vaccine. All prudent steps towards what the old timers characterize as preventative medicine. We need everyone to do their best to be a part of the public health modernization and keep learning and keep progressing. There's certainly been an education component for all of us, no exceptions. Again, I would likewise wanna mention the healthcare professionals. When you listen to these people share and present, we're benefiting from their years of experience, training, and their strong commitments. I couldn't be more proud of our entire Curry healthcare community. And it's been a privilege to work with our Oregon Health Authority in multiple capacities. So we'll mention them again, because they deserve that additional mention. A huge thanks to St. Timothy's Episcopal Church, Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, Curry Homeless Coalition, Oregon Health Authority, Curry County City Leadership, our three Curry School District Superintendent Intendents, our Curry General Hospital and Curry Health Network. And yes, Brookings Core response, and certainly Coast Community Health. Gotta mention the continued support represented by the Talawa-Dani tribal nation. Thank you all for your great work and your wonderful hearts. We wanna share the resources available and continue reassuring the public of where to get accurate and factual information. If you need help with anything, you're most well, most welcome, of course, to contact me, 541-247-3229. Again, 247-3229. We'll find you the help you need. A pleasant good evening to all.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Voice. With that, we have one final poll for all of you. If you would be willing to respond, this helps inform this. And I really highly encourage you, if you have thoughts about the forum and the format, the topics that we reviewed tonight, please let us know. We have the email shared up on the chat, info@wilddivercf.org. That continues to help us refine and figure out what information do you all need access to. And just a final, thank you so much. Stay safe and have a good night.